I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:04. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for August 2nd, 2022. Before we get to any of our business, why don't we do a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's take care of some housekeeping items. Let me remind everybody that we'll address the board tonight. To make sure the microphone is turned on and to speak clearly into the microphone, please also ensure applicants and any speakers identify yourself for the record because the minutes are prepared from the record. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for August 16th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, what other administrative items? For those of you that are here with interest in item number five, which is Dick Anagnost as the applicant and owner for the two apartment buildings, my understanding is that applicant has requested a continuance, which the board would likely grant, and so I could save you the time of having to sit and wait that one out. It would be continued to September 6th. Let's see, we've got to appoint one of our alternates into a voting position. And so because Nelson's going to recuse himself on item number four, we'll appoint Maureen in to vote on that that item. Tim, do we do these item by item or we do these meeting by meeting with the appointments of? I think- Yeah, no, that's true. I think that we've undertaken to keep account of how many items matters people have voted on, so.
Yeah, we can certainly start doing that for the cheat sheets again.
Okay. Yeah, I figured that most of the folks, actually, I thought all of those cars in the parking lot for us and I was thinking, what did we do? Boy, did we step in it. Oh, Tim, you're here on National Night Out? That's your thing?
I'm always here on National Night. It seems like it always falls on a planning board night or very close to it, so.
I thought it was one of those things that you really liked to volunteer for and you would always substitute somebody else. But anyway. Maureen, in for a voting position. Is there any planning and zoning administrators report tonight, Tim?
I do not have anything this evening.
Does any member of the board have questions for staff on any item? I think if we all showed up, we wouldn't have enough seats, would we?
I'd have been kicked back there, which-
Yeah.
I like to be in the line of sight. That's why I don't choose to sit back there.
Neil, but even then, Neil and Halim, I don't know if we've gotten extra seats, but anyway. Good problems to have. I'm happy for it. Okay. If there's no questions for the staff, the next agenda item is a consent agenda and we do not have one for tonight. And that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is GTONH LLC as the applicant and owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved planned unit development to account for additional residential units permitted by variance. The parcels located on Twin Bridge Road in the R4 Residential Aquifer Conservation Town Center Overlay, Elderly Housing Overlay and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 5D3, Lot 114. It's Case Planning Board 2022-27. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from our applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is associated with item five on the agenda for the 48-unit workforce housing project. Back, I want to say it was earlier this year, the applicant was before the zoning board of adjustment to allow for this project, the 48 multifamily residential units, to be added to the Commons planned unit development. Under the zoning ordinance, there is a cap of 400 residential units in a PUD. The zoning board granted a variance for this project to exceed that number. Part of the conditions of that variance were that in addition to requiring the site plan approval, which is the other agenda item, that the applicant be required to amend that PUD to reflect that these additional units would be allowed in addition to what previously was approved. Much like what happened, if you recall, at Crosswoods Path when the most recent apartment project at the corner, Crosswoods Path Boulevard and DW Highway, we had to amend that PUD to allow for the additional multifamily units to be included.
Okay.
I'm not done, but Nelson's got his hands up.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've been notified that I am in a butter to this plan and therefore I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and participation in the meeting. I'm going to step down for the duration of this discussion.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we have here is we have a written narrative that was prepared by the applicant in conjunction with town staff. Because the Commons PUD has had so many changes over the years that were undocumented and not shown on various plans, similar to, again, what happened with the Crosswoods Path PUD. We have a an agreement that will be put together, recorded at the registry of deeds that essentially confirms that on today's date, the amendment to the PUD was approved to permit the two, three-story multifamily residential buildings containing 24 workforce housing units each on the subject property and that it does not relieve the applicant from getting the site plan approval. So that is what we're looking for here tonight, is for the board to allow this amendment to the PUD based on that zoning variance that the ZBA granted, so that the site plan can then move forward.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction, Tim. A question about the amendment, given that there's been some other changes that have not been documented. Is there any mention in this amendment that we're not necessarily adopting or mending or approving those various stray things that exist or?
Our, we've reviewed this with legal counsel in both cases and in both cases, his recommendation was to limit it specifically to the action that was granted by the zoning board. So in this case, it was just the additional units that he wanted to see reflected in the document.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to. I just wanted to, sometimes we put a statement in there that says we're not addressing any other past sins.
Yeah, the town's attorney did not seem to request that that language be included.
Okay. Is there, I know it's not this applicant's problem to try to resolve all those old historical warts, but is there any benefit to at some point having a consideration and getting them all cleaned up?
If the board wants to add something like that, then-
No, I don't want to do it tonight. I mean, this applicant couldn't bring us the information to do it. We don't even know what we would be talking about, but.
My guess would be that unless something significantly were to happen with the redevelopment of the non-residential portion of the PUD, that there's not likely going to be any additional residential development. I think this is the last parcel that is available within the PUD for development.
It wouldn't matter for our business because the zoning board is the one that grants variances, but what's, do you know they understand the logic or reasoning behind having a cap on planned unit development?
That is a question I would have to go back and do some research and I'm sure that there's a particular recused member of the board that might potentially be able to answer some of that rationale when we're not discussing this project specifically as to why that was in the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter. The ZBA has granted them the variance and it's-
Yeah, I'm not sure where the number of 400 came from. It's been in the ordinance for the duration of the time I've worked for the town.
Yeah. I guess as far as a cap goes, it is not like we bumped into it all that often, so it hasn't really obstructed a whole lot. Okay, is the applicant here? Come forward. Once you're all settled in, make sure the microphones turn on and introduce yourself and tell us about the project. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good to see you. My name is Dick Anagnost. I'm the developer of the site. With me tonight is Jason Lopez from Keach Engineering. He's our chief engineer. First of all, let me thank you for considering our request for continuance on the site plan until September. We'd like to come before you with a full, complete, and all comments addressed before we get here. And we also have been working with our butters, so we appreciate the extra time.
Excellent.
The proposed project is two 24-unit buildings. It is located to the right or to the south of the existing Merrimack Commons Mall, which is at 515 Daniel Upstah Highway. Everyone should know it as the Tractor Supply or the Dollar Tree site. We've renovated the mall. We've been successful in getting additional tenants. We will be by December 100% occupied on the commercial side of it. And this vacant piece of land sits between us and Twin Bridge Road. It is actually a separate lot, but we're going to take advantage of the fact that we have over 600 parking spaces for only 80,000 square feet and use some of that parking on the south end for the units themselves. You will see later on that we've addressed all issues that the fire department and everybody has requested, but we're also addressing the tenants' requests that we don't put traffic out onto Twin Bridge and we agree that that's not the way it should be. We'll be directing our traffic out through the lighted signal as I explained at the variance board meeting. Other than that, I would be open to answer any questions.
How will you get the traffic to go in that direction? Is that like one-way entrance from your parking lot or something?
It's, yes, it's signage. The entrance off Twin Bridge is for emergency vehicles only. And when we, and we have this in two other projects where we exit through the commercial property and we do it with communication with the tenants when they're first coming in and we do it with signage.
Okay. So is it gated on Twin Bridge Road?
It won't be gated. The fire department didn't want to gate as a result of not having the Knox Box key and the, what do you call it when the other towns?
Opticon. Jason Lopez, Keach, North.
Jason, is your microphone on?
Yep. So the Opticon system, surrounding towns, not all surrounding towns.
Mutual aid.
We will do that. But we've worked, and that's part of the delay on the site plan that we're asking for the continuance on tonight, is we took a little time to work out with the fire department how to get the access and work with staff to solidify that that access concern for fire while still maintaining the access out to Front Street and the lighted intersection.
Excellent. Thank you for letting me get out over my skis and talk about site plan. That's not the item before us and it's going to be-
It's quite all right.
Tim, what are the criteria we need to consider in order to decide whether to amend the?
There really isn't much. Just for information, the, there are 372 residential units currently as part of the Commons. With these 48 units, it'll bring it to 420. So you're basically exceeding the cap of 400 by 20 units. The variance was granted. There really isn't much other than this being the formality to have the PUD allow this to move forward, which the zoning board has already basically directed. This has to happen.
Okay. And if this was an undeveloped lot and all this was being proposed to be built with 420 residential, would this meet our criteria to approve a?
Today it would not because it would, unless they had obtained a variance to-
On the number of units, but other than the number of units, would it meet all the requirements?
Wouldn't meet today. The overall plaza would not, but the current proposal to build the workforce, buildings will meet all of today's requirements and regulations.
Okay. Thank you for that. Other questions by members of the board? Barbara?
Yeah, I've had a really hard time trying to figure out the history here and the GIS map didn't help me, so. Okay, good. I didn't miss anything. So that being the case, you know, what is different about this and why are we getting this? Because on my time on the board, we've not had this request for other projects.
One other time.
Yeah.
It was the Crosswoods Path.
Right. So how is it that we're getting this? Is it just because of the history of all the changes? Because darn, if I could find out where Windsor Terrace was.
It's because there aren't a series of plans other than the original PUD approval that was filed and kept in the town offices. So I don't have plans that show various minor modifications. So the best solution that we were able to come up with with legal counsel was to record the document that basically would take the place of a plan amendment showing all these changes that have happened that we don't have documentation for and adding notes to allow for it. This basically puts the information on record so that title searches and deed research will find this as part of any research that's being done on the property and will obviously have copies here on Town Hall as well.
Did that answer your question or does look even further back in the history? Because I might be able to attack this from a different angle that-
Well, you know, what I would have really liked would have been a map to show me what this was. Because if if our community development office is having trouble tracking it, you know, we're looking at this to approve it and we can't track it. So I'm uncomfortable with all of the changes and not being able to see it because I'm a visual person exactly where we're talking about.
We're talking about the the various residential developments. I believe it's London Court. There's another.
Windsor.
The Commons, Windsor, Windsor Terrace and Wentworth Place.
And there's also part of that, there is an open space lot that's owned by the town. I believe that may be where the wells are.
It may be, I believe.
So all of those residential developments plus the plaza?
And the commercial plaza itself, yes.
They were all developed as a part of a single plan at one point and were given approval as a unit?
The Commons Plaza, where it sits, is actually in a residential zone because it was approved as a planned unit development, which allowed for the mixed use to take place.
Because there was an overall master plan to it?
Well, the zoning hasn't changed. But the PUD allowed for you to introduce non-residential uses in the residential district, which is how we ended up with that plaza.
I guess the fundamental piece is that this was all part of a comprehensive master planned development and we're adding something to it. So we've got to touch the master plan first to say that you're allowed to add something to it.
Another analogy would be similar. It's not apples to apples, but the mixed use projects like Flatley and Edgebrook and-
The outlet malls.
The outlet malls have all come back and had to amend their CUPs to allow for changes to then go through site plan. This is essentially the same thing, except it's a different section of the regulations that governs the development.
Yes, we did that when we did the self-storage out for Gordon Welch. When we did that, we amended that CUP, but we had current plans. But in this case, Robert and I spent the better part of a morning going through board files and plans and I got him to break a sweat. We're going through all the folders. And there was, there was, there was some difficulty finding some documentation on old plans. There's a lot that's happened and even some of the plan sets don't have all the sheets within the plan set. So trying to recreate every step of every modification is what's happened over time out there. I wasn't going to spend that much time and from what I saw, that you might not get 100% of it. You probably could get a little more than what we found, but it would take an investment in time.
That's why when I was asking about that earlier, I was being cautious to say I wasn't expecting you to solve that mess.
Thank God. It was long before my time.
No, it was just sort of a curiosity from a planning board standpoint, not an imposition that I would put upon you guys.
There were a lot of files, but many of them not complete.
I think that's what, where I was getting at with the other questions I asked of Tim, which is would this be approvable as it stands? And as to the apartment piece, it could be approvable with our current regulations. Tim, are we required to take public testimony as a part of this?
It is a public hearing, yes.
Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any further questions or discussion on the item? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion that the board grant final approval to the application subject to the conditions laid out in the memo dated July 27th, 2022.
Motion in a second to grant conditional final approval to the amendment to the planned unit development.
Just to clarify, this is actually final approval, not conditional final. The condition is a general condition to get this recorded.
Okay. Makes sense to me. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. So check that one off your to-do list.
Thank you. We'll see you next month with a lot more detail.
Yes, sounds good. We look forward to it and it looks like you're going to bring us a bunch of neighbors that have interest to tell us about it too, so.
Yeah, we've met.
Good.
And again, ran out and tried to catch some of them, give them the contact information so we can communicate between now and the next meeting.
Keep talking.
Yep.
Keep talking.
Excellent. I always love to hear that at least there's been an attempt at those dialogues and it's problem solving. Doesn't mean that you can tackle every issue, but it's good to have the dialogue. Okay. Item five on our agenda, let me read it into the agenda so that we can vote on its continuance. Item five, Dick Anagnost as applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan review to construct two multifamily residential buildings totaling 48 units in accordance with New Hampshire Workforce Housing Statutes, which is RSA 674:58. The parcel is located on Twin Bridge Road in the R4 Residential Aquifer Conservation Town Center Overlay, Elderly Housing Overlay and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map 5D3, Lot 114. It's Case Planning Board 2022-25. It's been continued from our June 7th and July 5th planning board meetings. And I think you heard from the applicant what the reason and the intent is for seeking another continuance.
Just for clarification, we received revised plans from the applicant Friday afternoon. I then informed the applicant that there was not a possibility for those to be reviewed in time for tonight's meeting. Gave them the option if they wanted to do a general overview and act on acceptance of the application. They opted to have the plans reviewed so that we have a better, fuller understanding of where things stand when they come back in September. So this would be continuance of both the acceptance and the hearing to September 6th.
Sounds good, Tim. Thank you for that. Will we have peer review results by September 6th?
We already have the peer review results. The revised plans were to address those.
Oh, okay.
The main issue, as was mentioned, was that initially the applicant was looking to limit all access to Twin Bridge Road to force everybody to Front Street and the light. The fire department was not on board with that, given the location of the project. It's proximity to Twin Bridge Road. So we've been working, the applicant's been working with the fire department to come up with a solution to try to limit the access as much as possible to Twin Bridge to, again, as you've mentioned, direct that traffic out to the light at DW.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay. More discussion? What is, Nelson?
Yeah, I have several comments, but I'll hold them all. I just want to mention that I'm missing a couple pieces of information that I would like to have for the next review. And that would be that there is reference in here to a traffic analysis that was done and I didn't get a copy of that. And also there's reference to a Thussin O'Neill review, which is the review that Tim is speaking about. I didn't get a copy of that either. I would like to have those copies available to us before the next review.
As is standard practice, unless they're specifically requested by board members, those are not things we typically include in packets.
They're not things, no, but-
They can be now that they've been requested.
If they're requested, absolutely.
This is, this is a request. Consider this a request, please.
There it is.
That's what I wanted to say.
Anything else?
That's all I have that we can comment on this. I have a lot more, but-
That's for the substantive hearing, yeah.
Yeah, we'll save it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Barbara?
So if we're, I'd like a copy as well.
Yeah, everybody, put it in the packets.
Everybody going to get us?
Yeah, thank you for that. Is there a motion to grant the continuance to September 6th?
So moved?
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Yeah, you were-
You're not voting tonight.
Not voting on this one anyway. Okay, so that's 700 to grant the continuance. Yes, with no further notice to abutters. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just be out of line a little bit. Tim, do you need PDF copy or hard copies of those?
PDFs are all perfect.
Okay, yep, okay. Just send me an email if there's anything else you need on that and I'll get that to you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just for purposes of ease of submitting information, I will not be including the full hard copies of the drainage or traffic or peer review. Those will be electronically sent because that's a butt-ton of paper to try to submit to everybody, so. Those will be electronic.
So I gotta print it out.
Or go in and sit in the office and go through it.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay.
No, I want to take a card out, hard copy home.
You can do that. We'll figure it out. Everybody can get what they want one way or another. Okay, item six on our agenda, Peter McClintock as the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a lot line adjustment between a newly unmerged lot and an existing lot of record. The parcels are located on Hadley Road in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Aquifer Conservation, Town Center Overlay and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. Tax map 5D-4, Lot 43. It's Case Planning Board 2022-28. And the item is continued from our July 19th planning board meeting. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This parcel was, up until a recent action of the town council, a single parcel on Hadley Road, which if you're not familiar with, is off of McElwain Street, not far from where we are sitting right now. They were apparently involuntarily merged sometime in the past to comply with zoning requirements. Under the statute that has been on the books for several years, 67439AA, there is an ability for property owners to unmerge said lots that were involuntarily merged in the past by municipalities. The applicant has done that, creating the three lots that were originally created back many, many years ago. What this application will do would be to adjust the lot lines of these three lots to end up with two lots. There would be a consolidation of two of the unmerged lots and then a slight lot line adjustment with the third lot so that the lot that will be newly built upon will consist of the 20,000 square feet required in the Town Center Overlay District for development. They were also in front of the zoning board of adjustment last week.
Would you repeat that last sentence?
The fact that it's now 20,000 square feet?
Just prior to that.
I was doing that off the top of my head. I wasn't reading that, so. The lot is going to go from the unmerged three into two lots resulting. The two of the lots that were unmerged will be combined by this lot line adjustment. The third lot will have the line shift slightly so that it contains 20,000 square feet, which is the minimum required in the Town Center Overlay District. This was, this lot was in front of the zoning board last week in order to allow for a variance to build within the front setback, which was granted by the ZBA. Once this lot is eventually created, you don't need to recuse on this one.
No, but I believe the lot that was in front of the ZBA was not this one.
It was.
Was it?
Yes.
No, it wasn't.
Ah, this is across the street. I'm sorry. I'm mistaking myself.
Right.
Forget that. My apologies. That's what happens. I was distracted by other things that went on in that zoning board meeting, so I didn't really pay-
Really?
Yeah. So that being said, I'll turn it over to the applicant. It's a fairly straightforward process with going from three lots to two. One lot will have the existing home remain and then the newly created 20,000 square foot lot will have a new home built on it.
I'm confused why you changed your mind. I was following you with the other, the other argument. Now he says it's across the street?
No.
No, 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 no. I was mistaken by what case, what lot he was talking about with the zoning board last week. It's a different lot, not associated with this.
Everything he said was right, except that it had nothing to do with the ZBA last week.
Okay. The ZBA part, forget I even said that. That's my mistake.
So just so I have my bearings, everything that we see on this plan in the middle was merged into one lot, then unmerged into three lots, and now we're going to do an adjustment that makes it two lots. Is that right?
Kinda, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm Trevor Yando from Meridian Land Services.
Peter McClintock with Brad Newt Development.
Can you say your name again? I didn't catch it.
Trevor Yando from Meridian Land Services. As Tim said, the purpose of the application is to adjust the common lot line between the recently unmerged lots. So the original lot numbers on this plan are depicted as six, eight, and 10. 10 is on the northerly end and six is the southerly with eight being the middle lot. So this, this application would adjust the line between lots eight and 10 to create a larger buildable area on the lot that we call out as 5D443-1, which would be the adjusted lot. And it's a, it's a fairly, you know, flat lot. We've adjusted it so that the remainder lot, 5D4-43 to the south, is going to remain conforming with the zoning requirements and the northerly lot is going to have a better area on which to put a dwelling for home. It's really, we did address the majority of the comments from the July 13th staff memo from Robert Price and then there were a few additional conditions noted in the July 28th memo. memo that we are agreeable to. And, you know, they're extremely reasonable and easy to, to accommodate for on, on the plan. The one item that we, we have had additional correspondence with Don Twamala of DPW regarding the driveway location, and we're trying to coordinate a site visit with her to determine an appropriate location for a potential driveway on this lot. I think that's, that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of it. Happy to answer any questions. Peter, do you have anything?
No, you pretty much got it.
Want to add?
Yep.
Which is the front?
The front of the lot?
Yeah.
The, the frontage would be along the northerly side of Hadley Road, beyond that 90-degree turn. Yep.
So the long, the long edge?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if that's the front, I see you've got a 30-foot and a side setback on one side and a 40-foot side back, setback on the other side. Why do you have that configuration? Why aren't the two sides?
Because we have two fronts and two sides, essentially.
Yeah, the, the rear setback is, is 40 feet. So, so the side on, to the left, is a...
You actually have more buildable area. We missed this, but when you have double frontage, you don't have a rear, you have two sides and two fronts.
So you'd have 15, 30, and 30.
There's only 15 on that.
On the right side?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was after. So the 40 should be 15?
Correct.
40 should be 15.
The 40-foot setback from the right away.
15 and 30, 30.
So the setback should be 30 feet from both of the Hadley Road frontage lot lines?
Yeah.
And then it should be 15 from the other two, because when we have a corner lot like this, there is no rear. It's two fronts, two sides.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Well, that's good. Actually, no, it wouldn't because that one has one front.
But that one's already got its building on it, and it is what it is. Now, the building is entirely within the front setback on Hadley Road. Has that all been?
The, essentially, in consultation on similar types of situations with the town's attorney, we used to require variances for these lots to be modified in such a way. However, because their lots are both becoming more conforming from the unmerged situation, it was determined that we do not need to require the variances for those encroachments to take place. Nor for the lot size of the Lot 43-1, because it's becoming larger than what it previously was.
How long ago was the house built?
30s.
I think it was 1910.
Yeah.
Early.
1910.
I think it's early. It's...
If you, if you see where the road actually lies, it's partially on property, partially in the right-of-way. This is a very old, very narrow roadway in town.
Yeah. Well, if it's a 1930s house, then it didn't need a variance when it was built.
Nope.
So it's pre-existing, non-conforming. Otherwise, it seems fairly simple to me. Other questions by members of the board? I don't have a lot. It seems very simple.
The only other comment I would make is because this is a lot line adjustment, the board can make the determination that the various items that are typically required for subdivision are not applicable. This would include the sidewalk requirement.
So our first task is to decide whether we've got a complete application. What is the rule of the board?
I move we recognize this as a complete application.
Is there a second? Jamie? It's a quiet voice. Motion and second for completeness, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, seven zero zero. Oh, yeah, still Nelson abstaining.
There's no need for Nelson to abstain because he's not a voting member tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
I draw my abstention.
Let's have the discussion about the waiver of the usual formalities of a subdivision or, or, yeah, would be a subdivision because it's a lot line adjustment, including discussion of sidewalk.
I will so move.
That we...
Just need a consensus of the board. There doesn't need to be a more motion.
Okay. It certainly makes sense to me that we not require the formalities, and I certainly don't want to see a sidewalk built at the end of the road here.
Yes, no rule.
Anyone? Any one disagree?
Nope.
All right, that counts as a consensus. Then, are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Is that guy behind you? Close the public hearing. Does anyone have any further questions of the applicant? Is anyone prepared to take final action on the...
I would just suggest that whoever makes the motion adds to the correction to the rear setback for Lot 43-1.
Makes sense to me. Barbara, do you have a question?
So that was my question. Are we talking about any setbacks here? Because this is kind of a long and narrow type lot.
I'm going to speak for the applicant, but he kind of specializes in these kinds of lots. He's done many of these older and challenging lots in town with some very good success.
So he knows to put it sideways and not the other way, and ask for a lot line adjustment, I mean, for a setback.
Either that or go talk to the ZBA and get a variance. We couldn't, well, permit building in the setback anyway. Well, we can correct the setback, so it's shown correctly on the plan. But other than that, he would have to go to the ZBA if he couldn't fit within that envelope. But it looks like it, with that adjustment, it'll be a decent-sized envelope. Is anyone willing to make a motion for final action?
I would move to prove this set forth with the conditions subsequent and the error of the lot line being fixed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second motion? Second by Lynn. Further discussion? Tim, is that a clear enough motion?
I got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Night, guys.
Good luck with the development of the little lot. Looking forward.
And... Just an example, if you know the, the lot behind Charlie's Diner. That's a Peter.
Oh, is it? Thank you. Okay. Item seven is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I think we should, oh, number eight seems to pick up the minutes from our last time that we wanted to clean up some. Who voted on what? More fallout from my clumsiness and starting off with the wrong agenda last time is that we were off-camera when we did all that. Does anyone have any other discussion items?
I'll reach that.
Well, we're on number seven first, but if there's no discussion items, we'll go to minutes.
I have a discussion.
Let's have it.
I believe, I believe at the last meeting, we talked about moving the time.
Yes, we did. And we mentioned that we were going to discuss it here tonight because we needed staff to be aware of changes in times of meetings and not do it without telling them. What we had discussed was the potential to start at 6:30 instead of 7:00. Does anyone have any conversation on that point? And Tim, is any obstruction that would stop us from making such a change?
I would, without speaking for my staff, I'm going to speak for my staff, that it's less time between the end of the day and when the meeting starts. I think we'll be okay with it.
So the, we would have to start that at a meeting where we haven't already continued something to that date and time.
The earliest we would be able to do this would be the second meeting of September.
Is there any reason we can't do 6?
I hate it.
For Bob, who has to commute from Concord to work.
This is a, this is a... Oh, I know, I know.
So September 20th would be the earliest we could make such a change.
Okay, so September, what, 30th?
20th.
20th. Okay. Is that what everybody wants to do, switch to 6:30 starting September 20th? All right, Tim, you got to keep up and remember that and remind us when the packet comes out in big, bright, red letters.
Speaking of that meeting, because of the fact that Paul McCally and I have accelerated the CIP process, that's also the date we're targeting. CIP presentations will be September 20th.
Okay, we got an extra half hour.
We're that far ahead from where we typically are, so instead of trying to cram it in at the end of December, we really want to get this in front of you guys before it goes anywhere near the council and the school board. So the proper process of the planning board making those recommendations before council takes actions will take place. I already have, it's still in my heart, MVD has already submitted theirs.
Tim, truly thank you for your efforts and all of that. I know that we had started talking about that years and years ago, but the whole idea of the CIP and the planning board's involvement is that we have some input into the process at a meaningful time. And when we were the last one in line, we had no meaningful input into the CIP. So I think, I don't know whether, you know, that'll change outcomes of votes on various things, but at least we're timed where there's a logical point to what we're doing.
At least the council and the school board will have the recommendations, the board, before they make their funding decisions, which is the way the statute is intended.
Yep.
Let me understand that. Will we get an opportunity on a final version of it? Now, if we're going to do it first...
It's your document. What the council, the council doesn't adopt a CIP, they adopt a capital budget based on the planning board's CIP.
Okay, all right. So they won't change...
The, the planning board is the final stop for the CIP. The CIP is a planning board document. It's supposed to be. We're fixing this. I, I, I thank Paul for finally listening to me after years of me trying to get this process fixed. But yes, it's ultimately, the, the CIP is a planning board document that is a reference to be used by the governing bodies during their budgeting.
What's a CIP?
Capital improvements Plan.
Got it.
This is where the town decides, anything that's over X dollars, it's usually 50,000, but it also has to be an actual real estate improvement, not just a...
Whoever, you'll get the, the 20-cent introduction to CIP. Since we have so many new members who haven't gone through that process, I'll make sure that whoever, whether it's me or one of my staff, goes through the overview of what the CIP process is, what a CIP is, and how it figures into the big picture.
Yes, I misspoke, though. It's not all real estate. A fire engine or something like that can be capital as well.
Master plan because it's...
Capital item.
Capital items.
Roads, drainage, bridges. It's a lot of its infrastructure. It's, it's the, the long-term investment into capital facilities and equipment.
And we've had a rating system, and I won't remember all of this. It's about five or six levels.
One through six.
Certain things are urgent, and some things are...
Urgent, necessary, desirable, deferrable, inconsistent.
Yeah. And we've placed those recommendations on things usually after they'd already been voted on, which made no sense. But we did it. So I'm glad to have the process right way around. We may be one of the only towns that actually do it the right way around.
London area does.
But...
There's a reason for that, too.
Anyway.
Speaking of which, aside, those of you who remember Kelly, Kelly Shamell when she was here, now Kelly Walsh, she actually is now the town planner in London area. She just started there.
Good for her.
About, I think, last week.
Good for her.
After a brief stop in both Milford and Epping. So it's her hometown. It's my old position, so I'm, I'm really proud of her.
Good, awesome. Okay. That's our discussion items. Any other discussion items? All right, then let's clean up the minutes of our last meeting and whatever else we have to do.
Before we do this, I just want to verify, you guys did act on the June 25th and July 5th minutes at that last meeting?
Yep.
Okay. So what we need is, who made the motion on the consent agenda and who seconded?
I believe I made the motion.
Okay.
Anyone remember who seconded the motion on the consent agenda at our last meeting?
I, I seconded one from Lynn, but I don't, I don't...
This was the regional impact and the extension requests.